Well, I had a break.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Here. Somebody tell me he showed up.
The charge on my phone today, I guess I'll go down there.
Oh, God.
Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Yes, sir. Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nitrano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, before we begin the official business of the evening, this is not something anybody wants to have to discuss, but as we all know, there was a tragedy yesterday in Chatham, one of our neighboring communities that we have a wonderful relationship with. Four young people lost their lives. Those four young people impacted not just their own families, but hundreds of people, if not thousands of people, across this country and across this world. So I would ask that we all keep those families, keep those children, the first responders and their families, in our thoughts and prayers. In their honor, I would ask for a short moment of silence. Thank you. All right, moving on. I'll accept the motion for the approval of the April 8th, 2025 Committee Meeting Minutes.
Motion, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have no presentations, correct?
Correct.
All right. Next, we have ordinances tabled. I believe we have one. Mr. Clerk, could you please read that ordinance?
It is 2025-155, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for sponsorship in the amount of $39,582 for grant agreement number 25336010 to the Pharmacy Gallery and Art Space for the Bob Walmeyer Route 66 Exhibit to be held May 1st, 2025, through December 20th, 2026, for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. Motion for consent.
I think we have to remove it from the table first.
Yes, Chair. I would like to make a motion to pull out 2025-155 to put on the table for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, now a motion for consent? I guess that's kind of been made. It's off the table, now the consent motion has been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. Now, for ordinances for committee consideration, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, if you're gonna vote on this, you're gonna have to... You're gonna do it now, or are you gonna wait till it comes up a different number? On the ordinance, we just took off the table.
I thought we did, I'm sorry. I thought we took it off the table and we moved it to consent.
Now you need a motion to pass it.
Motion for consent.
Second.
So moved, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think I was a step ahead of myself, sorry about that.
It's just a technical procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And now, could you please read the ordinances for CWLP, Public Works, and General City Business?
Yes, sir. CWLP, 2025-157, an ordinance authorizing contract with Engineered Pump Services, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $78,030 for the repair of Unit 4 Circular Water Pump A for the Office of Public Utilities. Motion for consent, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any against?
2025-158, an ordinance authorizing payment to Itron, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $94,758.77 for services in relation to meter reading data for the Office of Public Utilities. Motion for consent, Mr. Chair.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-159, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of Palomet Ball Mill Lining System for the Unit 4 Ball Mill from Modesto Minerals Industries, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $279,204.05 for the Office of Public Utilities. Move consent, Chair.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2025-160, an ordinance accepting proposal number UE25-43 with Oro's Properties LLC removal and beneficial use of coal combustion byproducts in the amount not to exceed $1 million for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for debate.
Second.
This has been moved to debate, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory, go ahead.
Director Brown, so can you talk to me? There's been some information sent to us about this byproduct, and I'm not the best on it, but where it's going in the permitting process and that situation.
Well, it's beneficial reuse, as for what Oro's and Bush has done. They did it, I believe, in the past at Kincaid, I think.
Right, wasn't it Kincaid, they were at, Pawnee Plant?
They were. That closed their portion or whatever, and they moved what they call Crown 2 Mine for basically the... What?
Crown 2.
Crown 2 is by Verden.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a beneficial reuse, it's allowed by law, you know, for that.
It's through DNR, not through IEP.
Okay. So is it permitted, is it not permitted?
Yes, it's permitted, yes.
All right. That's about the most of my questioning, but I will say I'm a... You know, and this goes along with the coal ash ponds and all of that that we're talking about, I just, you know...
Well, this is not the ash ponds, this is for the ash that's generated from Unit 4.
Right, I get it, ash, waste, all of those things that we're gonna come up on. You know, I just have, you know, I always ask those questions because it feels like we're just moving it from our community to someone else's community, and, you know. So this beneficial use, I just wanted to ask those questions, just so I can learn a little bit more about this process, so I appreciate you, thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Yeah, so this contract's for three years, correct?
Yes.
And where it's going, does that facility have the correct credentials to receive it?
Yes.
Their license permit or whatever, they have what is needed?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, real quick, Chair, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
This is the dry ash.
Yes, correct, yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. Could you just maybe explain briefly what the beneficial use is for this product and how it's permitted?
I don't know if I can get that far into the permitting process.
Actually, not into the permitting process, but yeah.
I would need somebody else probably to do that part of it for me. But beneficial reuse, though, for them is to help basically the reclamation of the mine, and that's basically the farthest extent that I have of that process, but...
And it has to meet certain criteria to be used as...
Oh, absolutely, yes. I mean, it has to follow all the IDNR specs for mine reclamation, so as far as the permitting process.
Thank you. I just want to be clear, I realize that while this process may be regulated by DNR, I am going to vote on this one because it doesn't directly relate to the DNR permit, is my understanding also, so... Although if it makes any... I guess if there are any questions, I'm... Actually, I will vote present on this one, just to make sure I don't get into trouble with my day job, but thank you for the explanation.
Anything further, Alderwoman Conley?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Chair. Doug, so with something like this, would that be things that we could bring forward from our committee, from the committee that me and Alderwoman Conley would be on, for updates, as I'm hearing some of my colleagues talk about it?
I mean, I don't know what we would discuss, really. I mean, as far as, this is where the ash product would go.
Okay.
You know, the contract is there, you know, as far as the details, but...
And I think, I guess, too, just for the public, too, as well, so if we ever have something else come up, like I'm still trying to figure out.
I can see if there's something else that maybe we can talk about in general terms, maybe?
Yeah, just for education-wise.
Yeah, let me see about that.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Nitrano?
Thank you, Chair. So can... So what exactly is the use?
It's in the reclamation of the mine, and I don't know for sure, but I believe when they're closing some of their facilities, like their ponds where they have their wastewater, they're de-watering them, and then they're putting a mixture of different materials in there to close those ponds. I'll have to verify that, but I believe that's what they're doing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, there's a motion to put this on debate with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2025-161, an ordinance accepting and authorizing the purchase of power agreement for solar energy resources with AES Clean Energy Development, LSA DBA Segment Solar LLC, for the 25-year term in the amount not to exceed $13,450,000 annually for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent?
Second.
I have, okay, thank you. I got a motion and a second, any discussion? Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. Doug, could you just kind of explain briefly? I mean, 13 million looks like a lot of money, but how this works in with our current way that we buy kind of peak power?
So when we... So this purchase is for energy and capacity. The energy's the biggest piece of this, really, and the amount of energy that we buy off the market, you know, what we do is we look at the market prices, look compared what the existing sources that we have for generation, and then we'll buy, some months we'll buy more, some months we'll buy less, but on average, there's enough for us to fit this 25 megawatts into that to where we would not be buying that from the market anymore.
So this is a reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions because we won't be purchasing off the grid from other...
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, because when we buy off the grid, we don't really control that on the block purchases, right?
In higher demand times.
And this facility is the facility that is located south of Chatham and gonna be connecting directly to our transmission lines that run south past Chatham to Hemmerich.
So there's not a whole lot of work for us to connect into this, to add this to our...
There's a little bit of work, but it's pretty minor.
And all that infrastructure is paid for by this connection agreement.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory?
No, thank you for that explanation, that helped me. This is a good thing for us. This is a good thing for our city, correct?
Right, correct.
So we should be excited about this. As we ask questions about this, this is a step closer to us, you know, not burning coal and things. So, you know, with that said, for me, in my mind, okay, we're gonna go here, are we gonna need to further diversify our portfolio and get more?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, we've got other things that we're looking at. The problem with, you know, I know this is a bone of contention to the some, you know, where you have to... These solar vendors basically don't want to talk to you unless you sign an NDA to work on pricing and stuff like that, so, you know, we can't share a lot of details because they're looking at land options, and then if they... If it gets announced, then somebody else is gonna try to come in and take their land, and then, you know, so it's complicated, let's put it that way. That's why it takes so long for these kinds of structures to take place, but... Yeah, we are continuing to look at that, and hopefully, you know, we can bring something, you know, within the next year, maybe for some more solar as well.
Yeah, that's where more so I was getting to, is keep the, you know, keep the pace, trying to, you know, meet the needs for clean energy, and we appreciate this step, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Nitrano.
Thank you, Chair. So this reminds me of our Integrated Resource Plan, and so I was wondering, how will this fit in with us moving towards the IRP? And then also, like, what's the status update on that?
So the, I guess, the IRP piece, as far as this going, you know, forward into it, it would just be another piece that gets listed as a contract, essentially, a PPA, under that, so that, you know, for the next, you know, 20 years, that's, or 25, 25, that's where it's at, right? So that's something that'll be there, that kind of... If we just say if we need, you know, 200 megawatts, 25 megawatts would be, you know, reduced down, so now we're looking at 175. Does that make sense?
Okay.
On simplest terms?
Yeah.
More or less, that's kind of how that gets input into the IRP.
Okay, I'm like, my concern is, and I'm not super technical, and I wasn't here when this happened, but I know before our last IRP, we made a big renewables purchase that turned out to not be a good investment for this city, and we learned that through the IRP. I'm sort of hesitant that this may be a similar situation.
Well, I would say we didn't, the IRP really didn't determine whether it was bad or not.
But it highlighted that...
Actually, we knew that before then. But the, you know, the problem with like a long-term contract, if you want the facility to be built, whether we do it ourselves through bonding, we have to pledge rates, pledge rates for that in order to secure the bonds from bond investors, that's, you know, a 30-year type of deal. Same thing with this, the investors that are the developers, I should say, that are building the solar farm, would not get financing to build it without some long-term agreement. So if we want that option to do that, we don't have a choice if we wanted to do it. We could not do it, we don't have to go forward with a resource to continue to buy off the market, but, you know, like with Sija, you know, as the more power plants close in our MISO Zone 4, power prices will increase, you know, for our zone, capacity prices will increase. So right now, we, you know, there's no guarantee that prices will increase, but there's good indications that they are.
Okay.
That's the best we can do, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. If I had a crystal ball, I probably wouldn't be here.
Okay, well, I appreciate your response, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you. I think my concern, this is a good thing, and I'm glad that we're doing it, I'm gonna be supporting it, but I still always worried about public engagement and engaging our citizens. I feel like, you know, I mean, this is 13 million for this particular project, but I think CWLP spends a whole lot of money without engaging the citizens. When we decided we was gonna do a plan, I thought we was gonna be fine because we was gonna schedule some public meetings and have some public input and engagement. But now that you're saying there's something going on downtown, and so we're not doing the plan, and we're not having the hearings, when's the last time you met with the public on any of your projects that CWOP does, to get their sense of how they feel about it? And it doesn't matter which group, any of the groups that have an interest in this kind of work that you do?
The, you know, it's been a while since we've had like a public meeting. I would say the ash ponds are probably the last time that we've done, and I can't remember the date for that. That's probably the last time that we've had some kind of a public hearing on that, you know, and the IRP was probably the last time that we did a bigger, broader, you know, push for that. And then from that, you know, we did an RFP for projects, and this was one of them that, back then, came forward and said, "Hey, we're gonna build a 100-megawatt facility." Then we had all these issues happen with COVID, supply chains, and the prices doubled, and, you know, the market prices were still pretty low then, so justifying that to the council wasn't really appropriate. But we continued to find out where they're at, what they're doing, and then we did another RFP, which, you know, we issued, and that's the result of this, so...
And I think that's great, I think because we did a plan before, a lot of great things happened. A lot of good stuff got done, all the way up to this particular project. So what I'm encouraging and what I'm trying to ask you, Director, is to start the public engagement again. Call what you want, but we need to be talking.
And we will.
And setting dates and times when the citizens can weigh in on some of this big-time money we're spending, and maybe you can hear their ideals about some of these things, and not just work in this silo where it comes to us and we... And then us ten say, "Oh, yeah, this is good," but we kind of leave people out, because what happens is we hear from the different groups, and we understand. That's why you're experiencing all these different, all the people deciding to start asking questions and to get involved, because it has to make sense. And some of it does, some of it doesn't, some of it is over our heads, but that's why they're the experts, you're not the only expert in Springfield, your staff's not the only, and I'm just asking for engagement. Just do some civic engagement with the groups so that they can have their say and help persuade some of this. I'm hearing things like you serving capacities that is a natural conflict to what you're deciding on how we operate, so to eliminate all that, we gotta be transparent.
Well, I would say that's, you know, a false statement, I don't really want to hear that.
I don't know, I don't know. But that's why we have to have public and be transparent.
That's not public engagement. That's somebody accusing me of not doing my job.
Do you own, are you on any boards or in any capacity outside of your job with the City of Springfield connected to the work that you do?
So yes, I serve on the board for the Utility Association, but I don't put the city second to that.
We don't know, I just asked for the public engagement, just to make sure.
Well, I'm not gonna sit there, though, and do the accusatory type stuff. I'll engage, and we're going to engage as a utility with the IRP process. Just as I explained with the legislation issues with that, we're not gonna have meetings now, and then have more meetings next week, and then more meetings in another month. We're gonna have those meetings so we can get the input from everybody, not just from select groups. We represent the entire city, and we're gonna make sure that everybody has a voice in that IRP process.
Everybody will be invited to the meeting, right?
Absolutely.
So you will be doing what I'm asking, so my thing is, when? When?
Well, again, we want to make sure that the legislative process is done, so we know what was going on. Just as was mentioned, that, you know, we could be grandfathered. Well, I did get to see that after that meeting, some proposed language, and it basically said that there'll be grandfathering if you followed the full intent of the bill. Well, we don't know what's in the bill yet, final. That's not gonna happen until it passes. The bill that sits there has not been amended whatsoever. So whatever happens, we want to make sure that we comply with it because there is money on the table that we can go get from the state, if it's appropriated, that would help fund that IRP process and help pay for some of that, up to, I think, $250,000. I would like to see 500,000, but the 250 is definitely something that we shouldn't just pass over, so I want to make sure that happens. And I don't want to waste our time doing that and having, you know, those meetings take a lot of staff time, it's not insignificant. So we don't want to waste our time, we want to make sure we put the good value. This particular piece, this 25 megawatts, has been worked on for years now. I've done presentations in the past that showed kind of where our load profile is, where their solar is, to the council, it's, you know, they're out there. So it's, and it's a good thing to have, you know, the solar, I think you all agree with that. So, you know, the public participation is going to happen with the IRP, and we're gonna go over all of that, for all the resource options.
I won't prolong it, I'll just say that, you know, to me, it's just like we meet right now, but very, when they meet too, and they got session too, we might as well not make any decisions, take any, because they may come up with something. I mean, I just not getting it, and it was probably personal, maybe I just ain't getting it. But I don't think that stops you from starting now, having these engagements about having meetings with your public, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for consent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Public Works, 225, 2025-162, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Springfield Park District and the City of Springfield for overlay work at Washington Park and Centennial Park and sidewalk right away on East Cornell Avenue in the amount not to exceed $223,654.50 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Alderman Rockford?
Director, Fuchs, please. My question is, is this something new, is this something that's gonna be continuous?
This is actually a continuation of a process that we engage in about every two or three years, a cooperative effort between the, between Public Works, the city, and the park district. And what it is, is we sort of allow them to be a part of our overlay project for some very, very short stretches of pavement. And so we're gonna be at Washington Park and Centennial Park, out by the Dog Park, is what it is. And then the sidewalks are actually out by Eisenhower Pool there at Cornell, on the south side of the pool. So it's, this is, it happens about every two or three years, and it's very, very short pieces of overlay that, since we are in the process of doing it and they need it, it's just, it's more convenient for everybody.
Is it an exchange of properties, or is this something...
No, we're just, we're gonna overlay a couple of short stretches of pavement, and then we're gonna replace the sidewalk there by Eisenhower Pool. So the properties that will remain under the jurisdiction of the park district.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
No, I would just comment, you know, I'm in agreement with it. The area over by Eisenhower Aquatic Center, not only that, but all the way down, over the recent years, we put a sidewalk, the city's put a sidewalk on that back street, a lot of kids walk in the street and things, and they got that hill over there. So it has played out dividends, the district did their part up to them, so I'm happy to see this portion finish out that connection, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
As I say, I think this happens about every two or three years. It's the first time it's happened on my watch, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Director. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-163, an ordinance accepting lowest bid and authorizing the execution of a contract PW25-02-66 with Lincoln Land Concrete, Inc., and Capital Ready Mix, Inc., to purchase ready-mix concrete and related materials for the amount not to exceed $325,000 for the Office of Public Works and City Water, Light, and Power.
Motion for consent, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-164, an ordinance accepting lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of a contract PW25-02-65 with PH Broughton &amp; Sons, Inc., Truman Flat &amp; Sons, Inc., Group Materials, Inc., and Crown Trucking, Inc., for the FY26 maintenance materials for the amount not to exceed $1,000,012,64 for the Office of Public Works.
Move it, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
2025-165, an ordinance accepting RFP, PWF2555 with EL Pruett &amp; Company, Petersburg Plumbing and Excavating LLC, and PH Broughton &amp; Sons, Inc., for the cave-in repairs for 12 months in the amount not to exceed $1,550,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
General City Business, 2025-166, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to the sale of business for the Rail Yard LLC, DBA Rail Yard located at 2242 South Sixth Street.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-167. An ordinance authorizing decrease of number of Class A liquor licenses by one due to the closure of business by causes Pizza Inc., DBA Jack McComaro's, uh, Par Four Lounge located at 7036 Kings Mill Court.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-169. An ordinance authorizing payment of workers' compensation settlement with Brian Freese, a current city Springfield Fire Department employee for a settlement of workers' compensation claim in case number 23-WC-016745 in the amount not to exceed $37,425.75.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-170. An ordinance authorizing payment of workers' compensation settlement with Seth DeMarshall, a current city Springfield Fire Department employee for settlement of workers' compensation claim, case number 24-WC-017899 in the amount not to exceed $61,127.75.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-171. An ordinance amending chapter 132-04 of the 1988 City Code of Ordinances and amended to make a local violation of impersonate of public official of the city of Springfield.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Um, is this Alderman Gregory, Mr. Rockford? I think you're still on there from earlier.
Oh, my bad.
Thank you.
In general, Corporation Council, can you go over this ordinance? I don't have a problem with it, but.
Sure. So this tracks state statute, which makes it, um, it, it an offense to impersonate a city official or a city employee. This would allow us to issue an ordinance violation instead of a, a state violation and will allow us to pursue it in our administrative court.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams.
That answered my question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moved in second. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-172. An ordinance amending chapter 94, article nine of the 1988 City Code of Ordinances as amended to charge fees to assist living facilities, independent living facilities, nursing care and nursing home facilities for lift assists.
Motion for debate.
Oh, debates. Second.
Um, any discussion? Yes. Alderman Williams.
Yes. Um, Springfield Assistant Living on, um, clearly, uh, is in Ward Three, of course. And, um, they called me and they had some concerns, um, uh, Corporate Council. And I, and I'm glad this is on debate because this is going to give us an extra week. Because, um, in that particular facility, um, um, majority of the clients are on Medicare or Medicaid. And, and I have questions on, on that fee. Who would pay it? Would it be the facility? Would it be the actual client? Uh, I have questions concerning, um, even in talking to the facility on, would they start saying, uh, that client's a little heavy? They may not be able to say it legally, I mean, say it out loud. But then they start making it hard to take them in to become clients, uh, because they're worried about if they fall, they have to pay this fee to get the, out there. At the same time, I don't, uh, want anybody abusing the city either. I think we have to try to find a way to punish the people who are abusing the system. I talked to Chief, come on up Chief, if you would please, and, and the chief told me my number for that facility was one. Uh, but he, they would be caught up in this, this whole thing, one this year, I'll say, in '25. But if there's one that's doing it with a bu- bunch of big numbers, we, we may need to look at that. I mean, I don't know if it's, uh, if it's staff shortage, if it's this, um, uh, workman's comp deal where, hey, don't even chance to just call the fire department, whatever. Again, I, I, I read what Decatur did. I read what a few other municipalities did. I'm not against this, but I want to make sure it's not passed on to people who already are, are barely making it and can't get in. So I appreciate you, you guys' support if, if this remains on debate to give us an extra week to dig into this a little more.
Right. Right. That's what I said. I'd bring my pad of paper and any questions you have, I'll try to get answers for. It is a fee to a facility. So people in their private home or anything like that, it's not billed to the individual. Now, if that fee is passed on, you know, just like anything, um, taxes and all that, business owners pass that on to their client eventually. But, but it is a fee to the facility. And, you know, most of the facilities around town, just like you said, that facility, one time. Um, you know, some of the other municipalities have a deal where you get a free pass, a couple of free passes before you're charged for it. But, uh, but no, so, um, like I said, it is to the facility.
Well, yeah, I, I'm just suggesting to my colleagues that we really look at this and think about it and see if there's a way we can come up with some kind of plan or, or a way to do just what you said. Maybe, maybe not the first time or a second time even, but maybe when you do the third time, then it kicks in or something like that. Because I don't want people who are overweight discriminated against. Uh, and then also they share with me, they'll stop reporting and start asking their roommate to help them up. Or now they got two people down on the floor. So it's a lot more to this and I just want us to dig in it while we got this extra week and then come back. This probably will pass in some kind of form or I'll support it because I don't want the city abused either. Thank you again.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Um, I think Alderman Williams actually asked a couple of my questions already. Um, I just wanted to know if you could, Chief, like what are comparable costs that, um, other communities charge for this service?
So he, uh, Alderman Williams brought up Decatur. They charge 500. Uh, Peoria, I believe, is at 800. Uh, other communities are anywhere from 350 to, to 800. Um, it's, it varies. There is a community out there that does charge individuals. I don't think we're, we, I, I don't think we have the appetite for that. Um, you know, because people are already having a rough time. So, but, uh, but there's, there's a variety out there. Uh, they do charge a hundred dollars per time for the individuals, but this is, this is pretty average. So.
And then i- is this the kind of cost that can be recouped through insurance charges? I mean, as, as Alderman Williams mentioned, you know?
So again, it's for the facility. So it would be on the facility. I don't know that the facilities have insurance to cover that. They're supposed to have staff that would provide these services to the people. Um, so one, you know, several, one of the facilities reached out and said, well, we don't, we don't do that. We have staff. And that, I'm, that's exactly right. You have staff. That's not, you're not the problem. Yes, we respond to your facility multiple times, but it's because you have people that need to go to the hospital that are injured, having trouble breathing, cardiac problems. That's not what this is about. This is for people who maybe can't, you know, have slid to the ground out of a chair and are uninjured and just need help back into the chair, or they're in a chair and need transferred to a bed. Um, and that they don't have the staff or aren't hiring the staff to provide those services.
And I, and I guess that, and I appreciate you bringing that out because I think, I wasn't quite certain that that was clear in the language. So that, and I don't know if, if Corporation Council, if we need some maybe extra clarification that this only applies when the lift is, is the sole service and there's no other, I mean, like you're not lifting someone up and then getting them in an ambulance to take them in for, for medical care. I, I just, I wasn't entirely certain when I read it that I, sorry, that I picked up that those were two separate kinds of calls. Uh, and I don't know if you, are you comfortable that you think it is?
We tried to, to cover that in the definition by saying it's required to physically move a person from that person's position to a different position who does not require emergency medical treatment or transportation. Uh, we thought that that was, uh, that that showed that there wasn't actually any medical emergency or any medical transport that was needed, but we'll look to see if we can't refine that definition.
Yeah, and I, and I'm sorry, where was that?
Um, under, under, uh, subsection A, definitions three. So that, that's why we use lift assist. We tried to put it in the definition.
Thank you. That was just my sloppy reading. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah. Okay. So as long as, right, it does not requ- yeah, I read that much too quickly. Um, that's what I get for vacation reading. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Alderman. Um, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, so, you know, this is definitely very, very concerning. On, on, on one hand, we obviously have some, some facilities that are, um, taking care of our most vulnerable population and not adequately staffed to, to perform a job. So, um, you know, I think it's important for, for us as a council to get those type of numbers and, and, and so we can identify where, where these at. Because I think in, in any manner, um, whether we charge or not, these facilities have to do better. Um, you know, because one of the things that comes from it is, you know, our, our, our guys and women getting hurt and, and going through this workers' comp thing and things of that nature. So that doesn't stop with just charging them a fee and, and maybe to bring it down for the, for the abuse harsh portion of, of, um, those who are abusing the system. But I'm concerned about the overall health of those, those people in those facilities. And I think it's important for us to know and really look at that, um, along with what, what we require as a city for those type of locations to have. Um, I know we had some good conversations. There's been good conversations about our ambulance system and what they need to do and step it up. And I look forward to seeing that come forward so we can sort of put that in place and see if that will help us decrease those type of calls as well as, as well as, um, um, some other conversations that I'd love to have. But I, I think, you know, debate is, is where we need to have this so we can look at some, some numbers and things like that. Because what we don't want is unintended consequences. We don't want, um, you know, for some facilities to, in any manner, pass along, um, fees to, to, to elders because they're not doing their job. Um, you know, and this, this is an unfortunate conversation that we have to address about.
It is, and.
Calls. I read the information from Decatur and, you know, seeing, seeing those calls dropped significantly, uh, when they did charge a fee. So there is some, some, some gameplay, but that's concerning within itself, no matter how we address it. Um, is more so what I'm worried about.
Right. And in the ordinance, I, I, don't let me interrupt you if you're still going. But in the ordinance, um, I stole from Decatur and, um, that, that this would sunset after a year or that we would bring it back up after a year so that we can decide, is it, is it working? Is it beneficial? Are there unintended consequences? Does that fee need to change? All of that could be brought back up after a year and we'll bring it back to, uh, to see if it's working or what, what we need to change.
I appreciate you bringing this topic forward. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Alderman. Um, Alderman Donlon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, is it appropriate to say that the genesis of this concept for the ordinance is the fact that we have bad facilities, bad actors that are out there presently?
We do have some bad actors out there presently and we also have, um, an escalating workers' comp. As you just approved two settlements for workers' comp.
Well, they go hand in hand, for sure.
They definitely go hand in hand.
You know, I share the concerns of my colleagues. I think this, the, uh, the concept of appropriately billing the facilities that need this assistance because they are, they're more or less required to have the staff to do these types of lifts presently. And what I hear you saying is they're not and then they're, then they're relying on the department and the department is therefore ve- burying the risk.
Correct, correct. The, the liability instead of being on the private company is on the citizens of Springfield, the taxpayers.
We are home rule and what I would encourage you and/or Corporation Council to look into in the next week is the fact that we do have, uh, more powers than some units of government by being home rule. That maybe we have a way to ensure that the passing along of the fees does not occur because that does not seem fair at all. Obviously, no one wants to have to call emergency services to be, uh, to, to be assisted with, especially in these types of circumstances. So it's only logical that the, uh, if you have a facility where you are, uh, sending your loved one or where you presently are for that matter, and you're relying on their expertise and they don't have the appropriate staff that they're required to have, it doesn't, it is not right and not fair. And I won't vote for anything that allows that fee to be charged to those individuals. It's just not right.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll get with Corporate Council on that.
All right. Any further discussion or any further questions for Chief?
All right. Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. Place this on the debate agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
2025-173. An ordinance authorizing purchase of a 2024, uh, F-250 crew cab truck from Marl Brothers Ford, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $68,477 under the state contract 21-416-P-29479 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent. Second. Got a motion in a second. All those, uh, excuse me, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-174. An ordinance authorizing sponsorship, sponsorship payment of $15,000 to Mees Promotions LLC. The Springfield Mile to be held at August 30th, 2025 through August 31st, 2025 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-175. An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to accept, execute and supplemental appropriate Route 66 grant agreement between July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 for an additional amount not to exceed $19,582 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-176. An ordinance authorizing sponsorship payment of $30,000 to the Juneteenth, Inc. for the 2025 Juneteenth celebration pursuant to the Article VII, Chapter 37, Section 37.62 of the 1988 Springfield City Code of Ordinances as amended for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Purchase.
Chair, um, a work I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, wait. I'm sorry.
Uh, I just, I would like to also be added.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Roy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes.
2025-177. An ordinance authorizing sponsorship to International Route 66 Mother Road Festival, Inc. to be held September 26th, 2025 through September 28th, 2025 in the amount not to exceed the payment of $35,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-178. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a transportation services and miscellaneous expenses for groups in the FY26 authorization of a supplemental appropriation in the amount not to exceed $150,000 approved pursuant to the chapter 38.35 for contracts under $150,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Wait, we do have some discussion.
I was just wondering, um, is, is there any way, um, have we explored if the Wyndham has insurance that can help cover some of these costs for us or is this solely going to be a city expense?
I think Mr. Doll's here. We can.
I know he's here. I was just.
Yep, there he is.
Putting it out there.
Yeah. So these are all conventions that we have sourced through our office. You know, we feel obligated for that. So, uh, you know, we want to be sure that they stay in town. They stay in town for future years. I think our options are open and we'll consider all options down the road. But for now, this is our immediate need and, uh, we had groups immediately, as soon as the Wyndham closed, we had groups coming in that next week and we had to provide transportation services, uh, meeting room rental, et cetera. And, you know, I think the Springfield Hotel Lodging Association, especially the sales departments at the hotels, they really worked with us and the Visit Springfield team, uh, and their professionalism on making those turns. We've turned over 20 groups, uh, just in the past few weeks.
Well, and I, I mean, we know how important it is to have these conventions coming in, to have these, these people in the, especially in downtown where we're trying to, you know, to strengthen that part. I, I have no problem with that. I just, I would just ask that at least these conversations also be had with Wyndham that, you know, um, their deferred maintenance is certainly creating issues. And i- if they have insurance that would help offset some of these costs, it would be nice that they, we could recoup some of that.
I think we need to leave our options open.
Thank you very much.
Um, Alderman Gregory.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think I, I, I agree with you in, in some areas on that, Alderwoman Conley. But I, I, I will say that, that we have to look at the Wyndham from, and, and this is not only you, Director, but from a, a council perspective, it's on us that it's not done. It's, 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 that's my opinion. You can have another one, but it's on us as a council that it's not done. So while we're worried about this, you know, the transport, when we had the conversation, we talk about rooms, we need rooms. Now we don't have any rooms at all and we're only going to be short 25, 50 rooms. Now we don't have any rooms at all because we didn't want to help the man do the window. And I truly, truly believe if it had been somebody else, we'd be walking down that path and the Wyndham is done. So, so when I sit up here, we have to start really doing what we need to do to the city. Has anybody talked to them? Where we at on the Wyndham as far as redevelopment? Any, anybody know anything? Ms. Amy? Anybody?
So we, we provided them an offer, um, in late 2023 and have not, uh, have not received a, a response, uh, with that, with that incentive package.
Okay. Well, I, 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 I would say I would really love to reengage with them because, you know, we're, we're, we're going to keep moving. We're going to keep approving some things. Our downtown is in bad, bad shape. We got an expiring TIF, et cetera, et cetera. Back to what I'm talking about last week, Growth Alliance, all this craziness. We got the windows sitting over there. What? But we need the rooms. We got big things coming out south. Hotels coming up out there. What we don't want, when we first talked about it, we don't want the rest of the city to dry up. And this is for us up here. We better stop playing or the rest of the city is going to be crumbling like some of the bigger cities in America, and the outskirts and the suburb is going to be the place to be. That's, that's my take, man. So don't, don't, let's not be too hard on the Wyndham. Because we got to move people to a hotel we shouldn't have been, in my opinion, all the complaints that people have on it at times, our legislators and everything else, should be advertising the stay at anyway from a city perspective, especially after we didn't get it, get it, nothing done to it. We should have been like, well, we're, we're not going to advertise people to stay there, but we need the rooms. It makes no sense. So thank you, I appreciate the time, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Donlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Doll, I'm not sure if this is a question for you, the Public Works Department or the PD, but, you know, obviously, this is a hot topic in Springfield. Um, you know, we deal with associations and what I do from throughout the state, and everybody's asking what, you know, what happened downtown? What's wrong with, why is the Wyndham closed? Could someone give a, give the public a very succinct, uh, explanation of why it's closed right now?
Well, it's, it's closed because there was reportedly some intentional vandalism, and, uh, they're unable to operate their elevators, and I believe some, there are fires of oppression. Uh, the Springfield Fire Department can probably answer that better. But yeah, I mean, they're closed because they're, they can't operate at this point.
I mean, I, I, and I know you can't, nor do you probably know, but I know you can't answer what, who, who we suspect, how it happened, but obviously, it was an extremely nefarious individual or individuals or groups or whatever that, uh, caused these problems to happen. It happened, from what I recall, nearly overnight. Uh, we had, uh, citizens, people from out of town, legislators, I've heard from multiple entities, individuals that, you know, basically had to leave the premises or they weren't allowed back in. And, uh, you know, it's nothing that, uh, just happened. It was, it seems to be, I'll say it that way to be careful here, but e- extremely intentional. Um, someone, uh, hopefully is going to be held accountable, someone or some group or what have you. And, uh, I, I agree that, uh, this is, uh, something that is vital, and we all, most of us, if not all of us, argued when we were considering past projects there to convert the property to some form of apartments, which I was opposed to because we need the rooms. And, uh, but what, uh, I would like to point out is, uh, you, the mayor, the city, were dealt something completely unexpected, something not good, needless to say, and you've gone above and beyond in trying to ensure, and that's what this ordinance is all about, trying to ensure that we keep these conventions in the city and go above and beyond, and, and I just appreciate it. I heard the mayor talking about it at Citizens Club last week, I've heard you talk about it on the radio and this evening, and I just can't recall that, you know, I mean, Springfield, although we are a medium to large-sized city, we don't have, uh, we don't have the, uh, we're not a Chicago where we have hundreds and hundreds and thousands of hotel rooms, but each, each of the facilities are, are vital to our, you know, health and welfare because it generates so many, many dollars. I, I know sixty percent is something you strive for, we don't want to accomplish it this way. But, uh, Mayor, I appreciate your direction and what's occurred and, and how, you know, and how we're trying to make sure that we keep what's already booked and keep what is forthcoming. But, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Alder McGregor, you said it earlier, that we need a vi- that, that hotel needs to be vital, needs to be operating, and whatever we need to do, let's, let's figure it out. Because, and I know I'm preaching to the choir because it's what you do, but gosh darn it, uh, uh, I, you know, uh, I, I personally have been involved in organizations, we have conventions, we've had them in downtown before, and people like to come downtown. It's got a unique, uh, it's got a unique feel to it, and we, but we got to have, we got to have the, the, I almost said Hilton, but the Wyndham back, whatever we call it. And, uh, anything you can do, anything we can do, let's be creative, let's think outside the box.
Well, thank you, and I'll, I will leave the status of the Wyndham to the investigators, uh, on that.
On your question there. And, uh, I will, I will say this, you know, we, we have an owner across the street that's going to invest millions of dollars in their property, and that, that property, uh, is, is a, the double trees, is a solid property anyway. They're, they're putting millions into it. And we have new investments going on at the sports park, uh, we have a new home too, uh, right up there on the interstate. So we have new hotel product, um, we just have to solve this issue, right? And I will say that the Visit Springfield team has showed their professionalism, has showed their, so, excuse me, uh, showed their worth, and, um, you know, they made it look easy, and this was not easy. And our groups are okay, uh, our conventions are okay, we have nobody jumping ship.
We've not lost anybody?
We haven't lost anybody.
It's amazing.
Yes. So, uh, we are moving forward, and that's what we're looking at, and I think this is what this ordinance is about, and this is going to get us to the other side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams.
Yes, so this ordinance addresses relocation and movement for, for, for the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Do we have an actual date, uh, that the Wyndham has said they'll be back to normal operation?
No, Wyndham has not provided us a date. They've provided us this ninety to a hundred and twenty-day outlook. That's all we have at this point. We're waiting on the Wyndham and their ownership group and/or their management group to let us know, uh, farther out. Those, that would be involved in our fall or, or winter conventions.
Okay.
So we haven't notified anybody of that because we have not heard from the Wyndham.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman, purchase.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Corporation Counsel, have we heard from the Wyndham?
On, on this particular issue, uh, not, not on the civil side. Um, so we would, I would defer to our investigators because they've been dealing with management to the extent that management was there. Um, but we have not, uh, addressed ongoing issues on my side.
I would hope, we're about to be in May, so I would hope that we hear something by June or July from them to state where they're at, plans to address, and it's a little alarming that, um, and it's, it's nothing towards anybody, but it's alarming that they have not reached out to talk to you at all. So we have Alderman Gregory talking about the help that we need to give them, but they also have some accountability too, like they, they need our help. So I would think that they would also reach out to say, hey, what can we do? Can we all come and sit at the table? Well, Mr. Disco.
Hi there. I've talked to, uh, Scott Larson, um, I didn't talk to him last week, but I've been talking to him every week just to keep updated. Um, he explained ServiceMaster and all the water, uh, damage they were controlling, and I've not gotten an update yet on the elevators. But, uh, it's just conversation, just hoping moving forward.
I understand it. So again, I hope to see some type of plans or hear something mid-June or July from them as we're going into the fall season, as Director Scott said, with our tourism, um, you know, things that we have on, because this is really going to affect also Route sixty-six, Juneteenth. Um, I mean, you have individuals who can stay on Dirksen, but most people come to our downtown. Legislation coming back, uh, I mean, legislators coming back in October for veto session. There's a lot going on and a lot at stake right now, too.
They can stay on Dirksen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one seventy-nine. An ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with allocations with the Springfield, uh, Partners for LLC for the, uh, rehabilitation of the central downtown in the amount not to exceed two million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars located at five twenty-nine South Seventh Street for the Office of Plan and Economic Development.
Motion for consent?
Move, motion for consent?
Motion for debate.
And we have a motion for debate. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion and a second for debate? Um, any discussion, Alderman Gregory?
Uh, yes. Um, so I just had a, a couple of questions. I was going to put it on consent, but I do have a couple of questions, um, about the project, and this will be for staff. When, when does our, um, downtown TIF expire? Not quite.
Sorry, it expires in, uh, two thousand twenty-eight, but we can pay out until two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand thirty.
Okay. I, I like how it's spread out, I, I don't think that's a bad option. And, and what does this leave in this TIF? And I'm, I'm, let me say this, first of all, I'm happy for this project. It's in, it's in the, what I call the southeast portion of downtown, um, a building that's been vacant for some time, so I'm happy to see this project. And, but I'm asking these questions on, on, um, for moving forward or purposes, because I know we're using some part of it as TIF.
So for this year, are you asking how much is left for like, for this year?
Just altogether, after we.
We have, uh, it's, we have like roughly nine million until the TIF expires. We have three million allocated for this year, we can pay out.
Okay.
Um, but it just kind of depends on the year and how much we get in revenue.
Okay. All right. Um, Mr. Stone, I know you can't tell us who's going to take over the building, but I will say, can you? Can you?
Uh, excuse me?
Can you, can you tell us? You lean forward like.
I cannot.
All right.
Everybody's doing it. Uh, I, I wish I could. Um, I, I think that, uh, it, there's some variables involved, uh, that you probably understand that, uh, is the reason why I probably can't say anything right now.
I understand. So, so I'll say this, it's been vacant for a while, I'm happy that you got a game plan to, to do it. Um, I'm on a hop on, on minority, um, hiring and getting people on to work right now, would love to see that on this project as I ride by. Um, and, and, and just finally, if whatever this entity moves out or whatever, um, as long as you have it, I just expect the, the top quality, um, of, of building maintenance and, and keeping it up and stuff until, uh, you find a new tenant or a soul. That's all I ask.
You will get that from me, yes.
All right, thank you. Um, so I, I'll move, um, that we put it on consent as well.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to put it on consent. There's some further discussion, Alderwoman Conley?
Just, just really briefly, um, um, so just to be clear, i- if you, you don't currently have a tenant, um, for this, uh, do you plan to go forward with this project even without someone in it, or? Like, we don't pay you unless this work is done, is what I'm trying to ask.
Correct.
Okay, sorry, I'm backwards today. Um, I, I just want to say, I, I've, I worked downtown for a significant chunk of my career, and I really loved being downtown. I, I, I think it'd be exciting to see such a large property. How many office, can you tell us how many offices this can hold? What the capacity kind of is, or what your?
I can tell you how many people, uh, so AT&T at one point had over six hundred people in there. Uh, I think that we're probably looking at well over four hundred people.
And this, this comes with parking?
And it does come with parking.
Which I know is, and not new parking, but the existing, an existing lot that's already there.
Uh, existing lot that's already there. Uh, obviously, if we have more, uh, people there than, uh, that existing lot can hold, uh, we have, uh, planned for accommodating all the people that would be in the facility, uh, to be parking within, uh, I would say within a block of the facility.
Hey, we, we, we talked briefly about this, I used to walk quite a bit more than one block because.
Right.
Cheap. Um, and then just also, just real quickly, I, you did mention, I don't know if you want to talk about it, how you're already using some of this space to support existing businesses?
Um.
Parking spaces for other?
Say that again, I apologize.
Are, are you, um, you had mentioned that, um, the possibility of like other businesses using this parking in, in off-hours too, and?
Yeah, so we actually, when we, when we purchased the, uh, the parking from the Sterns, uh, we actually did an agreement with, uh, with Karen Khan at Obed and Isaacs to be able to provide her parking because she had a parking issue where she didn't have any parking for her, uh, restaurant, so, uh, we worked an agreement with her to be able to provide her thirty-six spots.
I appreciate that, yeah. I, exciting to see more, would like to see more people coming to, to downtown all times of the day and night, so thank you for that, looking forward to this one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman Conley. Um, uh, any further discussion, seeing none, I just want to, for the record, there was a motion to put it on debate, you've withdrawn that motion, correct, Alderman?
Yes, motion for consent.
All right, very good. And we have a motion and a second for the consent, correct?
Do.
Very good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Any further ordinances, Mr. Clerk? All right, it is now time for unfinished business. Uh, is there any unfinished business before the committee? Seeing none, is there any new business before the commi- oh, what? Oh, you pushed a button, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Alderwoman Purchase, I think I thought that was from the last discussion, I apologize. Alder, Alderwoman Purchase, please.
That's okay, Chair. Um, I know we had a moment of silence earlier for, um, the, for the community of Chatham and the tragic of the loss of four young lives. There's a few, um, important points I want to touch on. Um, this accident shows how quickly emergencies can overwhelm local blood supplies. It's the blood already on hand donated before tragedy strikes that gives doctors the tools to save lives in critical moments. So today, Impact Life has added two hundred more slots to the Springfield location for this week to the scheduler portal, restock and prepare for the future crisis. Uh, I urge all eligible residents to donate, your gift can be the difference between life and loss for someone else's child. Let's honor the memory of these children by strengthening our emergency readiness and offering hope to others. You can contact Impact Life's website, or you can see Teresa Chan, Tran, who's the co-chair board member of Impact Life for questions. She's in the audience, could you raise, raise your hand? Um, so I, I think it's really important, what happened yesterday was just really, really sad, and to see young lives taken from us, and this is a way that people can also help. And it's not just, I'm always saying something even when somebody in our community on the east side life is taken. But this is a way that I saw was a big impact, and I know, uh, Teresa personally with Impact, uh, Lives too, with that board, so please see her if any of you would like to donate, or please go to their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Point well taken, appreciate that. Um, Alder McGregor?
Uh, yes, I'm going to shorten up my, my thing because it's freezing in here, but I would, um, old business, this falls under old business. A few weeks ago, we talked about, um, our minority contractor numbers and things, and I, I, I just want to compliment Mr. Lesko, I appreciate you, you've done an excellent job each time you've, you've sent out some information, it's, it's been well, I appreciate you. Um, so, a- a- and, and for me going forward, so with our contracts, and, and, and can, can you educate me? So on our contracts, when, 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 somebody gets a contract with the city, let's say, Green Track at Hillsbury, do they have to? Look for a subcontractor, i- i- don't we have something like that in our rules?
Well, we don't require contractors to use a subcontractor. Um, if they do utilize a subcontractor, there are requirements to reach out to, for female minority business entities, enterprises, for subcontracting purposes.
Okay.
So, so there is that requirement in city code.
But that's if they use subcontractor.
That's if they use, correct, if, if they don't, there, there's no, I mean, th- it's just their business that they're, they're employing.
And then, so, with their, with their, with their goals and things, do we automatically try to say, hey, this is the goal that we want to see you at with, with?
Yeah, yes, there are goals for both minority business, minority female business enterprises, as well as labor participation enterprises. Some of those, those are set with the, with the help of the Community Relations, uh, Commission. And then, those are tracked through our ePrism software, and some of that information that I provided.
Yes, 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 yes.
Is both good and bad, obviously.
I guess what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to wrap my mind around is, how do we get better representation of minorities on, on things that we have put out for contract and bid? How do we, how do we get more participation from our contractors? Whether they go to the Labor Hall and pull some brothers from, and sisters from the Labor Hall, and women from the labors? Or, how are we gonna get better at that? I have some ideas, but?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to hear any ideas, and be happy to reach out, I try to reach out, you know?
You've done a great, listen, I, this is, my con- my conversation right now is it out of total admiration for you and respect for, for the honest numbers that, that you have, have given me, because, you know, it's, it's concerning.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I think sometimes it's, you know, we need entities who, and, and we're tr- we're trying to make some in- internal measures to make our bid process a little easier to understand, because I'm the first one to admit that some of our, how we have our boilerplate and how our information is laid out is not good. We've been working on trying to update that to try and make it easier. Um, I think, you know, businesses who are interested in doing business with the city can always reach out to me, the, the purchasing, the purchasing pages, on the first page of the city's website, information to contact me is on there. We can work with them to get them in our vendor portal, to, to try and work with them, to try and, you know, get them to understand the city process, I'm happy to do that.
Do you think it will help for us to have our separate, separate, and Ethan, I don't want to step on your department toes, but do you, do you think at this point of where we're at and seeing numbers and things, it would be helpful for us to have more of a MBE program that is proactive similar to the state? I, I imagine my, Ethan is working on something fancy.
Absolutely, I think, you know, when we look at other comparable cities such as Champaign, and I apologize, my face is moving a little weird, I have a tooth infection, so this side is all numb, so, I'm good. A little bit strange, but, um, you know, there's programs like the C-DAT program like they have in Champaign, and some other comparable cities that I think it would be worth us looking into. Granted, a lot of these other cities have a different, you know, sized budget, they have different departments that have been invested and built, so I'm not saying that we can look at necessarily another comparable city and copy and paste what they have into what we have here, but I think we have been looking into, we even sat down with the Growth Alliance and, you know, the Springfield Urban League in cap nineteen oh eight, and said, you know, what issues are we seeing? As far as our participation numbers, I do think it would be worth looking into separating our minority business enterprise goals and our female business enterprise goals. The reason I say that is because of the types of businesses we have there. We have plenty of female-owned businesses that are constantly being signed off on as subcontractors, because I sign off on every good faith effort for trucking companies, for sewer companies, for, um, things that are vital to the infrastructure that we have here in the city. What we're missing is a lot of local minority-owned businesses that are either registered or that are applying for our opportunities with the city to be, or, or, you know, companies that work with us to be considered for, um, being subcontractors on those certain public works projects that are over fifty thousand dollars. And I don't hold that against our, you know, minority business owners or vendors, I just feel that we have a lot more minority businesses that are tailored to, um, avenues that are outside of that public works sphere. And so, you know, encouraging and increasing the amount of local businesses, minority-owned businesses that are in that lane and in that sphere, I think will, you know, increase our numbers there. It's a matter of education and increasing capacity for those businesses, and I think there are a lot of different things that we can look at. I think that we've, over these first two years of the administration, have been doing a lot of fact-finding and research to say, where are we behind, not just from a, a visual standpoint, but from a number standpoint. And now that we've looked at that, we've contacted the minority businesses that we have on our list, we saw who was registered with the state, who wasn't, contacted every business on the list that would respond to us. And the fact is, some business owners who are in our community just simply don't trust government entities, so they may not want to be registered with the state, and that's their prerogative. Now that we know that, we can begin working on different ways locally here at the city and saying, okay, what can we do to ensure that you'd want to be registered with us? What can we do to start increasing people's desire to look on the State Journal Register website? Or constantly look on the City of Springfield website and say, I think that I can be, you know, um, utilized here in helping my community. So I think now would be a good time for you as a council, because I'm pretty positive there would have to be some type of ordinance that would come forth and be voted on, to look at, okay, how do we approach the minority business enterprise and female business enterprise, uh, differently? So that way we can get a more accurate representation of how we're tracking those numbers and how businesses are, you know, cooperating and trying to meet those goals.
I got you, and, and, and I only ask those questions, I, I, I know the administration is working on that, I've sat in meetings with her strong on, 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 on this, and, and, and was echoed, you know, right by her, so I, I, I know we're, we're, we're going in this direction. Um, but I think, you know, time is money, money is time, and which each day going by, projects is getting done, money is made, and everybody's not making something, so, I would like to have those conversations and really come up and put our heads together. Um, it's been something that, that, that is important, and with, with, with more and more knowledge, you know, you, you start peeling back a nasty onion, an old onion, it stinks, and, um, it's time for us to really, really, um, get some things together in the city, so I appreciate you.
Absolutely, one thing I would say that we've begun working on that would encourage us all to continue to support is, we have one of the best minority workforce development programs at Lincoln Lane Community College that you're gonna find in the country. I've lived all over the country in that program, the opportunities it provides, the amount of apprenticeships with our local unions that come directly out of that program, I think are second to none everywhere. I feel like we need to very much support and push the narrative that, I understand a traditional four-year college is not for everybody, and you don't have to monitor success or, or, you know, uh, measure your success based on a four-year college or a degree. You don't have to measure whether you're a hero of your community or not, based on whether you're pulling kittens out of a tree or saving somebody from a fire. If you have the means to have a, a company to fix the roof of the little old lady that lives down the street.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
You know, we, I think that we should support that, I think we do a good job of that already, but we can always do a better job, and increasing that education, increasing that capacity will increase our numbers.
I got you, I appreciate you, thank you for the conversation, I won't belabor the point, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, um, Alderwoman Nottriano.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so, uh, my unfinished business is related to you, it's been a while since we've been out and, uh, since this has been a topic of discussion, um, but I wanted to check in with my colleagues and see if they were able to take a look at the library rubric for violations that Mordax sent around a couple of weeks ago, no? Okay, you did, okay, well, great, thank you for that. Um, so I, I looked it over and, um, was playing around with it, and I had some ideas that I like to bring to you all. Um, I, in, in checking it out, uh, it's really handy, because they break it down into illegal behaviors, unsafe behaviors, and disruptive behaviors, and in here, we mostly deal with the disruptive, and looking at the consequences on the library rubri- rubric, um, they seem to me to be, um, very reasonable, uh, you know, like suspending a person's privilege, library privilege for a day, as opposed to su- suspending your privilege at city council for a month or something. So, um, I think, you know, uh, we, I, if, if you would like to take a look at what I'm working on, um, and if you're interested in it, please reach out to me and let me know, um, I just think that there are some ways that we can, um, set some standards with, uh, public comment and meeting rules, and, um, put ourselves in a situation where, uh, our meetings are gonna run more smoothly, and people are gonna know what's expected of them and what is out of bounds. Um, one thing I don't want us to do is to, um, tone police and try to force people into, uh, behavior that is, um, you know, uh, behavior that is, um, foreign to them, let's say, right? Um, because not everyone is, you know, a businessman or attorney, they, not everyone, um, communicates in the same way or has the same vocabulary, and, um, I think when we're developing, uh, the rubric, if we choose to, um, I think we should really keep that front of mind, so, thanks.
Thank you, Alderwoman, um, Alderman Gregory.
Just real quick on the subject, I, I, I don't have a problem with the consideration at all, I, I dreaded, because I might break some rules myself. But, anyway, Murdock, um, but even if we adopted as a council this, this rubric, the, the mayor still would have her powers to, to enforce.
So, so the mayor would, would still have the power to enforce the rules, uh, but there would be, there, there would be the, the rubric for what the violations would be, and so if the city council set it, uh, a violation, um, you know, i- if, if you use a certain word, it's a, it's a one-meeting, you know, or a one-day suspension or whatever, we would, we would follow that as the administration. The, the point where that wouldn't, uh, take place would be the, um, the video, because there's no, there's no city council action that requires the, the video and the broadcasting, so there's a little more discretion there, um, but for, for disruptive behavior or violations here, uh, that would, we would be bound by what the council passes in the rubric.
So how does that work among us, I mean, at times we have heated conversations, we, we, I might slip up or something, I just want to be clear on what we're doing and, um, things of that nature, I've, you know, it is what it is.
So, uh, so the city council has a, has a separate set of rules, that's, uh, section ten of our, of our city council rules, um, which, which go towards, uh, demeanor. Um, because you are elected officials and you, you have a right to be here and, and this is your meeting, you can be publicly censured. Uh, we do have a, a method to have you removed in certain instances, but you all have been elected to be here and to vote, and, uh, there's a very high bar for you to be removed, because by removing you, we're removing the vote of your ward. And so, uh, so that is a, that is a, you, you fall under a different set of?
Thank you, I just wanted a clarification, thank you.
Um, any other unfinished business? Any new business?
Of course.
Alright, Alderwoman Purchase?
So we know this is a fun time of the year for us being live in the five. Um, we have the twenty twenty-five Fat Ass Five K and Street Party Charity coming up. We're just two weeks away, and my girls asked me to do an announcement. It will be Saturday, May tenth at eight AM, and then, I just wanted to just say and reiterate what the event is about, because I know sometimes I'm excited, I see a lot of people out, my colleagues come out and do it, that's the good time that I get all of y'all to be out with me. So the Fat Ass Five K and Street Party for Charity was invented on a napkin in the Celtic Miss Pub on St. Patrick's Day in two thousand eight. Walk or run the route through the historic downtown Springfield, Illinois. We have donated over one point nine million dollars to charity since two thousand eight. The route includes beer, corn dogs, donuts, and many other stops along the live music and entertainment throughout, and a lot of our local businesses participate in this each and every year. The five K is followed by a street party that includes cold Pepsi products, cold beer, barbecue, and live music by, um, Captain Greed and the Streep Shack Shooters. This race is not professionally timed and is open to all fitness and ability levels. Please help us continue supporting our charities in twenty twenty-five. So there's still time for each of you all in the audience to sign up, come out, or you can just cheer us on as we walk past and draw three steps and walk five steps, and just stop at each booth to get something to eat, but it's a really, really good time, and the weather is always good. So I'll be doing a friendly reminder next week, thank you.
And they usually give you a great t-shirt, too.
Yes, we were pretty bright and blue last year, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman, uh, any other new business? Alright, seeing none, it is now time for the citizens, uh, to address their committee.
Mr. Chairman, the first speaker is Brianna Ellers.
Hello, hi, gonna keep it nice, short, and sweet today, because like, I appreciate you, Sean Gregory, I'll say that, um, I appreciate the fact that we're looking at where the money is going, um, and that we're starting to criticize that, and starting to really question and think about, uh, is it going to reach our bottom? Is it going, is it gonna reach the most vulnerable? Because the most vulnerable are already getting slammed right now with life. Um, so I just, very appreciative of that, I also very appreciated the fact that, like, whenever the lifts were being, uh, talked about with the fire department, um, the unintended consequences, thinking about the future, being proactive, like, that's what makes me happy, that's all I, that's all I asked for, and it was, it, I very much enjoyed this meeting tonight, guys. I appreciate you guys up here, and that's not something that I normally say. Alright, so, with that being said, I'm just gonna say, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Caleb McGuire.
Hello, um, I also don't have much to say today, um, I just wanted to remind you guys about the possibility of having an ASL interpreter here and on the YouTube livestream, so that the deaf community can also be informed as to what's going on, so that they might be able to come out here and participate in these meetings as well. Also, I also love the way that today's meeting went, I love it, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Ronald Hamm.
Hiya, my name is Ronald Hamm, today I'm here in my capacity as the unfortunate technology coordinator of the Land of Lincoln branch of the DSA, and today, I would like to talk about class warfare. Sounds scary, it is, but not for the reasons you're probably thinking. The question at the root of this is, why can't we have nice things? Why can't we have better public transport, better roads, better sidewalks, better schools, better resources for people in need? Kids over on the east side are killing each other, and I wish it was just as bad as nothing is being done about it. It is worse than that, not only is nothing being done about it, but when people on the east side got together to try to do something about it, uh, certain members of this horseshoe actively tried to stop them. Why is that? This is not a rhetorical question, this is a question that has been asked of the city council for months now, and certain Shans in this audi- in this horseshoe have, nah, lost my place. Certain Shans in the city council have done an effective job of explaining the problem from their perspective. In fact, Chairman, if I may quote Sean, if I may quote Alderman Gregory from several weeks ago, he said, uh, "We don't just have a big pile of cash we can use to pay for things, everything is done through grants, and Trump can pull those grants at any time." I say this to the Chair, because I want the public to understand, this is a problem largely over the head of the city council. As much as the people of this city have pushed back against the policies of the city council, successfully pushed back against the policies of the city council in some instances, I understand there are clear-cut and easy-to-understand limitations to what the city council can do. In a general sense, I would request the Chairman to ask everyday people to familiarize themselves with those rules and limitations, and I myself would also ask people to familiarize themselves with those rules and limitations. I also say this to the Chair, because I want the public to understand in here explicitly, that isn't an answer. The question isn't, why isn't the city council doing more to enrich and support the community? The question is, why can't we have nice things? Saying the money mayor may not exist, but either way we don't have access to it, is not an answer, it's kicking the can down the road. It leads to another question, okay, then why can't you access it? Or, why aren't there grants to do that? And maybe the most important question, why is there always money to fund the police, but never money for school lunches? Because there is always money for the police. Here's the truth of the thing, the reason we can't have nice things is because there are people on every level of government, the federal level, the state level, the county level, the city level, and the ward level, there are people in positions of power more invested in punishment and vengeance than they are in improving society. There are people, including people who are not present in this city council today, more invested in punishment and vengeance than they are in improving society. There are people, including people in this room, who consider harming people for some benefit to be more important than helping all. There are people sitting here today who seem to consider putting people in prison for not having a place to sleep more important than helping members of the community to keep the homes that they have. There are members of the city council who have actively worked to prevent people in the community from addressing youth violence while lavishing praise on the police after putting a kid in the hospital for the crime of having tinted windows. There is at least one member of this city council who seems to relish in the opportunity to purposely and maliciously silence victims of police violence, silence people advocating on their behalf, silence other random people caught in the wake of that, triggering at least one lawsuit against the city, and then going on to brag about how he was just told he didn't even need to broadcast any of this. Triggering, triggering a lawsuit, by the way, in a time period where the city is trying to shore up funding, uh, due to a critical budget shortfall in two years. Not critical enough to avoid lawsuits, I suppose. Then again, Chairman, if I may quote Alderman Hanauer from the budget negotiations in February, it's not his problem, he's not going to be here in two years. There is a war being fought right now, it is being fought on every street, in every home, at every dinner table in this country, in this state, in this city. It is a war being fought between those people who believe that a grievance committed by one should result in a punishment for all, and everyone else who is just trying to survive. This is a war with casualties. Every person who dies of exposure in the street, every person who dies of hunger or malnourishment, every person killed by the police without a trial. This is a war that has been waged for generations and has ravaged this country in ways we are still trying to understand. Chairman, members of the city council, do not have the power to end this war. I am not so naive to, to think that they could, but they have a responsibility to push back against it. And to their credit, some of them are doing that. We saw that a couple of weeks ago, when members of the city council pushed back against the Center for Economic Development. We're seeing that now, too, and, uh, I guess I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Aaron Cahill.
Roy Walton. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of issues. I'm gonna try to make it quick and brief.
Mr. Walton, you'll be talking to me, I'm the vice chair. Uh, Chair, I'd step out real quick. Go ahead.
Okay, yes, sir. Um, my first, uh, my first issue is support for harm reduction. Because harm reduction is very valuable in the community for a couple of reasons. It gives some people safe places to go outside of city organized or leaderships. Some people don't feel safe because they've been identified or classified as this or that. So when they walk into these facilities that's ran by the cities or the health departments, then when they leave and you see them later, they get targeted for paraphernalia or all kind of other things. Harm reduction centers stops that and it makes them come forward. People complain that they can't get the people to come into their buildings or come to their, to their programs. That's why. Because they're scared to be later targeted. It also helps with reducing suicides because of stress and strain on people's thoughts. It also helps with stopping like pregnancies because they give you Plan B pills and different things like that. Stuff that people might not be able to afford. So they're very productive and very helpful. And I feel like we should support them more or build more funding for harm reduction centers, especially ones that's self-sufficiently sustained, like Intricate Minds. She does that on her own, by herself, with assistance from donations. But she sees over three to four hundred people a month that the health departments don't see because they're scared to come to them. My other issue is police misconduct. Because they say, once you cross, it's a thin line, and I believe in effective policing. I'm not against that. And I have made my own mistakes and I have suffered my own consequences with no retribution behind them, no ill will, because I feel like it's your job. I'm not mad at you for doing your job. But when you overstep your boundaries, then you become the same criminal that you say you're pretending to apprehend. You're no longer a police officer. You're a thug. You're a gangbanger. You're whatever you call the people that you say that you're trying to keep the city safe from. It gives you the mindset that, and it puts people in fear because it gives you the mindset that you can legally come into my home, unlawfully remove me, take me to an undisclosed location and have your way with me for at least an hour before I'm able to make my phone call and tell my people where I'm at. And then it's justified because there's no real reprimand behind it. It's a slap on the wrist and then they're back out patrolling. But let it be us, it's timing the county, pre-trial release, possible incarceration, major fines, loss of jobs, broken families. And I feel like, once you decide that it's okay to bypass your oath and do what you feel because you feel you have the power, you are no longer an officer. You are no longer a public figure. You are no longer somebody that I feel can keep me safe. You just like them. And I feel like I have to defend myself. It's not only dangerous for us, but it's dangerous for the officers because then it gives people the mindset that if they run up on us, shoot them like a regular thug. Because how do you pull up on people and don't use your emergency lights or don't identify yourself? Say if somebody is armed and you ain't identifying yourself and then he turn around and shoot you. Now y'all wanna prosecute him for saving his own life because he wasn't aware that it was an officer. These things need to be looked at and more seriously addressed. It needs to be more public awareness about who to turn to, how to file claims. It needs to be support for people that do because then they get intimidated once they do and act to force them to stop the claim. I'm not one of them people. I'm here on behalf of the community and on behalf of myself, and I filed formal charges and I continue to, I prepare to continue. Thank y'all for listening.
Kent Asia.
I'm gonna start off with a quote tonight from Coretta Scott King. "I must remind you that starving a child is violence. Neglecting schoolchildren is violence. Punishing a mother and her family is violence. Discrimination against a working man is violence. Ghetto housing is violence. Ignoring medical need is violence. Contempt for poverty is violence." And I'll be honest, I've talked to you guys as a council about optics before, right? How to communicate with your citizens, how you look to the city. And I think it's kind of frustrating that with what Alderman Cox mentioned that happened in Chatham just recently. Um, it was highlighted by a county board member today. Um, that our mayor went to go help with McCrispy's, uh, which I like to refer to as McCrispy Gate. Cause it's a little frustrating that in times like that of tragedy, that our mayor's at a McDonald's, eating chicken nuggets with our city workers. You would think the optics alone would talk you into staying home that day. Maybe not celebrating so openly in such a bad time because it seems like time and time again, the city doesn't really understand the optics of the situation, how it looks to your community. Because I'll tell you, News Channel 20 made a post about that. It wasn't even up two hours before it had over a hundred and twenty comments. And let me tell you, they weren't friendly. They weren't the community seeing support. They weren't the community feeling supported. That's the kind of thing that leads us to question the kind of leadership we have, as in the past, such as with the results of Sonia Massey. Now, while our police department was not responsible for that, that was in fact Sangamon County Sheriff's Department. That happened where? In the city of Springfield. It was a delayed response from our leadership in terms of giving the community somewhere to feel safety and that there was an authority that was gonna help. Instead, we get the kind of lack of good optics that we saw with Egan. Do we need to relive how bad that went? I don't think we do. I don't think we need to go back over it, but I will talk about the idea of this seems to be a continual problem with this administration. The optics of the situation and how it looks to people. Because what we're getting into is the idea that, just like tonight, we're talking about fining retirement homes. What's gonna happen? Do we really believe that those private equity or privately owned retirement homes aren't gonna punish the people that stay there when they get fired? I mean, the Springfield Fire Department came to you guys with detailed information less than a year ago about renting a city ambulance service. The money's even been set aside and earmarked for it. You guys could have already put this in action and done something about it long before we had problem in offending homes that we need to worry about who's doing it the most. Because quite frankly, they've already given you guys the numbers, right? Does anyone remember that? You guys remember those numbers that were came and presented by the union chief? Anybody? I mean, I think that's the thing is like, there's this whole idea that we talk about these issues and then suddenly we need to have an exploratory committee about it and spend another year dragging our feet to a solution. They've already told you guys what's going on. The August 2020, 2023 settlement of a 2021 unfair labor practice dispute with the SFD Union included the city agreeing to form a labor and management committee to explore the cost efficiencies and improvements to public safety associated with city operated ambulance service. Where does that stand right now? Right, okay. So the city op, the council opted to include 280,000 in the fiscal year budget that began March 1st for the purchase of an ambulance and $250,000 for ambulance-related equipment and supplies. That money's still earmarked. It's still sitting there untouched, unmoved, and what? I think that's the problem is what are the optics on that? How does that look when we're talking about fining retirement homes when we already had a solution that's been available to us for almost two years, right? I mean, I guess that's what's confusing to me is why I have to bring this stuff up as though somehow there's not a long memory on here. We're looking at rubric to punish people for being disruptive, but we're not actually talking about fixing the real problems in this city. Sean brought it up. Let's talk about the involvement of O'Shea Builders continually with no minority guarantees. How much money is the city gonna spend on that 111 million dollar project for the hub that the county's about to approve tomorrow in their special random April 30th meeting? They slipped the agenda in a couple of days ago on. How much money is that? How many earmarks and safety guidelines have you guys put in to ensure minority hiring? To ensure local contractors are included? Cause what I'm looking at in the listing of names included includes our usual suspects, more like it. Jeezy, Hanson, the ones that always line up. And I think that's what's interesting to me is that the optics of that look like the fix is in, especially when you get into the Sangamon County Growth Alliance and the people that are involved in it and how these things play out, especially when we get into like Sean mentioned, minority hiring. That's my time.
Thank you.
Ciara Sandage.
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna go against my rule. I usually write things down before I speak. Um, but today is a special day to me. It's April 29th. Um, three years ago today, I lost my mother to a fentanyl overdose. I just wanna remind the horseshoe that last year we lost ninety people to overdose. Um, I don't wanna say too much. I'm a little emotional, but harm reduction is really important, guys. Um, it's meeting people where they're at, whether that be, um, they wanna go to rehab today, whether they wanna use drugs today, whether they're in a crack house today. Um, we have to meet people where they're at for those people to remain alive. We have to catch those people that are falling through the cracks and identify the services that they need to keep them alive. Just because people use drugs don't mean they deserve to die. And the harsh reality is that people will always use drugs. Um, there's never gonna be a time where we're just gonna have a drug-free world and everybody stops using drugs. So, um, just kinda gonna keep coming back every week and dropping some facts on harm reduction. I wasn't really prepared today, but just to keep that reminder, um, that we are losing people at a very quick work, at a very quick rate to overdose. And, um, just make sure we're exploring where the money for harm reduction is going, how it's being used, and if those services are getting out to the underserved communities that they're intended for. Thank you.
Veronica Glass. Ann Logue.
Okay, this is a ballot, uh, not ballot, sorry, I'm taking ahead of myself. Um, this is a petition that I started in March.
Would you please speak in the microphone?
This is a petition I started in March, and it is basically a response to everything that's been going on since January 20th. I was pretty angry when I wrote this petition, but somehow I got 700 signatures. I also got some signatures from Chicago and Cankey Key and didn't quite count on that. But, um, I'm gonna read this, two versions of the petition. The, the first version, uh, is a little more toned down. Uh, chancellor from UIS kinda looked at my petition and said, here, let me give you a nicer way to say it, so. But, but I started this one, and so we're kinda stuck with that one. And, uh, it, it also means a lot to a lot of people and they were, they were so glad to have something that they could do with everything that's happening. It's so scary and it's very, um, it's something that we can't be in a bubble about. And that's why I'm here tonight. So I'm gonna pass this around. I kept the last page so that I can read the petition. But I just, I want this back. Cause I may get more, I don't know. I'm kinda tired of it, but it's been kinda fun. Um, so here is the, uh, the toned down version. "We of Sangamon County and the city of Springfield write to express outrage over the reckless actions of the federal administration. We must protect rights mandated to us of services that support all walks of life, health, education, welfare, just treatment, and security. Vital federal agencies and systems established to ensure confidential delivery of essential services have been severely compromised by drastic reductions to staff. Many are at risk as a result. None deserves such callous disregard by their government. No one deserves to be robbed of their privacy or legal, legal status. No one deserves to be erased. We are seeing it now. Therefore, we urge you as leaders to speak out boldly on behalf of those you serve. Oppose these reckless operations and demand that the federal administration act in accordance with existing laws and regulations to restore and ensure the health, education, welfare, equal treatment, and security of all USA citizens and residents." So here's the other version. "We, the citizens of Sangamon County and Springfield, Illinois, are writing to express our outrage over the reckless and unconstitutional purge of federal services that honor education, basic human rights, recognition for all orientations, races, racial injustice, the right for women to control their bodies, protection of our very environment, protections of our elderly, innocent children, vital adherence to basic science protocols, medical research, as well as reckless abandonment of our ties to our allies, alignment to dictators, the callous handling of our personal data by handing over personal social security to, uh, staff working for an unscrupulous, cutthroat businessman Elon Musk, under the direction of a sick, bankrupt Donald Trump. This mass intrusion and removal is not a responsible way to reform government. It is chaotic, shortsighted, and deeply damaging to our nation. We risk the very future of everyday citizens for the benefit of few. There is no clear plan, concern, or understanding of the consequences. This is not governance, it's sabotage. Without these protections, veterans lose access to care. Our climate is at risk. Food and water safety is, is at risk. Basic income from social security is delayed or taken, causing loss of basic survival to seniors. It is demoralizing to people who have dedicated their lives to protecting us to then just throw them out without notice. This is not reform, it's destruction. We demand you not stay silent at this complete breach of security and decency. We are speaking up because any silence at this time is depraved indifference in the face of this threat to basic standards of human decency." Twelve more minutes. "No immigrant is safe right now. SIU students are scared to death, and immigrants probably are afraid just to go to the grocery store. We need to be making plans." Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Aaron for Patrick.
Good evening, Chair and City Council. Um, I hope everyone enjoyed their week away from chambers. I felt compelled to be here today to make a public comment regarding public comments. I personally feel grateful and honored for the opportunity to hear from my neighbors each week. The broadcasting of public comment meets my needs for community, honesty, freedom, and connection. I am not only requesting that city council continue to broadcast meetings as well as public comments, but I would further request that broadcasting be codified into rule with whatever necessary amendments. As Dr. Marshall Rosenberg, a pioneer in nonviolent communication, has said, "There are no positive or negative emotions. Just emotions we feel when our needs are met and emotions we feel when our needs are not met." When people take the time to come here and share thoughts and feelings with you, it is typically unmet needs that are being addressed. Our feelings and needs are universal. And that bears repeating. All of our feelings and all of our needs are universal. We simply have different things that elicit our feelings and different strategies for meeting our needs. When I hear an elected official refer to some community members who address council as extremely abusive, those people, or crazy, it lets me know your needs are not being met. those people, or crazy, it lets me know your needs are not being met. Just as any individual's comments tell what is alive in them, your judgments tell us only about you. I will not assume to know what those specific feelings and needs are, but know that they are just as normal and human as mine. I would request that each of us in this community work to listen deeply to one another, beyond the feelings expressed, and the tone of voice used, and even the volume at which it is shared, and hear the unmet needs that are invariably being communicated, whether we are able to address the needs or not. I also wanted to express my gratitude of recurrent theme this evening. Over the last couple of months, when I saw changing camera angles, approved QR code avoidance, and intentional mic cuts, I primarily felt agitated, indignant, and disappointed, because I value everyone being heard, respected, and having accessibility. During more recent City Council meetings, the public comment period has had seemingly continuous utilization of a forward-facing camera, a visible countdown timer, and visual aid allowance, including an approved QR code. When I saw all of these changes, I felt grateful, hopeful, and surprised, because I then felt my needs for being heard, consideration, and consistency were being attended to. I would like to close by sharing a direct quote from Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., which I am reminded of each time I hear the Municipal League Civility Pledge. "I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that the Negro's great stumbling block in his stride toward freedom is not the white citizen's counselor, or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice, who constantly says, 'I agree with you in the goal you seek, but I cannot agree with your methods of direct action,' who paternalistically believes he can set the timetable for another man's freedom, who lives by a mythical concept of time, and who constantly advises the Negro to wait for a more convenient season. 'Shallow understanding from people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will,' end quote. My request from this is a call to action, that we may both individually and collectively seek that positive peace he speaks of, which is the presence of justice." And again, I would like to request that broadcasting City Council meetings and public comments be codified into rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I was notified that the, uh, my, uh, I had something I wanted to show on film, but I'm just gonna play it instead, because we weren't able to see it.
...narrative unfolds behind every fourth door, where families face a daunting 23.8% concentrated poverty rate. This figure is more than just data. It's a reflection of real lives and unspoken challenges. Behind these doors, there are parents striving against all odds, children whose dreams are shadowed by economic barriers. Yet within this landscape of hardship, there lies a resilient spirit, a community poised for transformation. It's here that Clean Slate Advocates finds its mission, turning daunting statistics into stories of hope and resilience. This is where change begins, in lives touched and futures rewritten with new opportunities. Picture two separate Springfields combined into one, one where opportunities flourish, and another where a staggering 12.3% face unemployment, over double the rate of other areas. This contrast paints a vivid picture of a city divided by economic lines, yet brimming with potential. Every individual in these struggling neighborhoods represents an untapped resource, a chance for growth and unity. Your role can be the heartbeat of change, transforming hardship into new beginnings and uniting Springfield's community with hope and shared strength. Imagine walking through Springfield's neighborhoods, where at every second door you look at, there's a family caught in the grip of poverty. This is more than a statistic. It's the everyday life for over half the population in these areas. Marked by a 53% poverty rate, these neighborhoods are not just areas of need, they're reservoirs of untapped potential. In Springfield, our diverse neighborhoods show us the potential in every resident. This diversity isn't just about numbers. It's about different stories and dreams. It highlights why we need initiatives that reach everyone. It's about making sure every voice is heard, every story valued. By embracing our diverse community, we strengthen Springfield. Remember, someone helped by Clean Slate Advocates today could be a leader tomorrow, shaping our city's future. Every step you take with us is more than a contribution. It's a powerful statement. It's about being part of Springfield's story of transformation and growth. This journey is not just about overcoming challenges. It's about building a community where every individual has the opportunity to flourish. Your involvement is a testament to the belief that together, we can create a Springfield that shines for all of its residents. Let's turn our collective aspirations into reality, creating a community where success isn't just a possibility, but a promise fulfilled for every individual who calls Springfield home.
We created that, uh, that piece, uh, me and our group, and we're real proud of it. I hate that we weren't able to view. I had a lot of beautiful pictures and things. Maybe down the road, we'll figure that out. But on Sunday, this past Sunday, in a six-hour period, we helped about 208 customers to the tune of 1,924 loads of laundry. It represented 70% black, 25% white, 5% others. The average salary or the average income of, of the individuals was $349.80. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an extreme problem. And our problem is, it's not a fair, it's not a fair playing ground. Now, we talked about, we, I hear, we're talking about MBEs and FBEs, and those acronyms at any time can mean anything. We gotta receive real change in order for us to eliminate poverty. When I grew up, and you worked for the, you worked for the city government, state government, or federal government, you were called a public servant. And trust me, being a public servant never was designed to be a millionaire, or a six-figure job that I knew of. You went to the private sector to create something, to be, be very successful in life. That's not the day and time that we live in right now. There's literally no enterprises out here that people can be aggressive and growing. We look forward to trying to achieve that goal going forward with our local officials, and allowing procurement to be achieved by all, and create more jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last speaker. That's it. I'm gonna turn the motion. Some move. Callers in favor.
Aye.
We're adjourned.